We welcome you all here tonight. This is kind of a pivotal night for a lot of people and I'm sure there's a lot of interest in this. So before we get down to business, we always like to start, if we can, with recognitions and celebrations because we do have a lot of really good stuff happening in our schools. So we have two of them tonight. So we would ask Ms. Amy Rose to come up and present Kelly Walsh High School.
Good evening. Chair Christopherson, Superintendent Hensley, Trustees. Tiled in the walls of Kelly Walsh High School is a permanent reminder of what it means to be a Trojan. The pillars of excellence are academics, athletics, activities, and acceptance. These pillars represent more than words. They define the heart of a school and the belief that all belong at Kelly Walsh. A full high school experience embodies one or more of these pillars. Guiding students to achieve, compete, contribute, and to connect. Principal Mike Britt's path in Natrona County includes time as a student, a teacher, instructional facilitator, and administrator at all three levels. His leadership reflects both experience and perspective, and his work continues to be grounded in the same values that define the Kelly Walsh community. Under his leadership, Kelly Walsh has once again earned a meeting expectations rating under the Wyoming Accountability Model. A reflection of strong academic systems, student engagement, and a culture dedicated to student success. Tonight, it's my honor to recognize Principal Britt and the Kelly Walsh Trojans who are here representing the school community that truly lives out the pillars of excellence each and every day.
Oh, you three get up here. Right behind me. I thought they would just follow. Chairman Christopherson, Trustees, and Superintendent Hensley, it is always a pleasure to be here to celebrate the accomplishments of Kelly Walsh High School. Dr. Gilbar and I happen to be part of a stakeholder group working with the Wyoming Department of Education and State Department of Ed to look at the state accountability model for which we are being recognized tonight. Specifically, that Kelly Walsh has been meeting expectations on that state model that is now four years running. I believe I might be seeing you again in a couple of weeks as we celebrate an activity group and an athletic team. As we worked through possible changes to indicators that would affect data points and ratings on that model that we're being celebrated for, I took some time to reflect on why we have found some success across multiple areas. I often bring up the value of those four pillars to which Associate Superintendent Rose just mentioned of excellence with academics, activities, and athletics being tied together with our culture of acceptance. It is our goal to be the best school we can be, not to meet expectations on an accountability model. That honor and recognition just happens to be the byproduct of our incredible staff and students. That brings me to the guests I have brought with me tonight. For the past couple of years, we have brought multiple staff members, including teachers, department leaders, graduation coaches, and tutors to represent our school at the board meeting to be celebrated. Our admin team decided the perspective from another group, the most important group of Trojans, our students, would be the best way for everyone to hear about why our school is so great. It is truly my honor and privilege to introduce three Kelly Walsh students, who all just happen to be juniors, totally a fluke, when we're... To briefly explain their feelings about their school, you'll hear from Olivia Lavin, then Ben Swanson, and Shane Johnson.
Hello, my name's Olivia Lavin, and I'm a student at Kelly Walsh. And I just think that we're such a great school because there's a huge sense of community with everyone, whether that's students, staff, just anyone you see, they're always welcoming. And I just think it's awesome that when our Kelly Walsh Lady Trojans were participating in any game this season, you saw a multitude of staff members who would wear Kelly Walsh gear. And that happens with all of our sports and all of our activities. You always see our principals wearing all of the gear for, whether it's band, or volleyball, or football, or track. It just builds a great sense of community, and I think that that's why we keep exceeding and why that everyone feels so welcome to be there.
Hi, I'm Ben Swanson, and I'm a junior at Kelly Walsh. And what I think makes K-Dub such a great school is the teachers, the staff, the athletic coaches, and the students. The teachers are always willing to help me, and they find ways to make learning fun. And my athletic coaches always try to make me the best I can be at my competitions and all that stuff, and help other athletes to do the best they can. And then the student Kelly Walsh body has made me feel included and appreciated as an athlete, and I am proud to be a Kelly Walsh Trojan.
Kelly Walsh is a school that not only meets the expectations, but exceeds them. The staff of Kelly Walsh consistently work in conjunction with each other to provide multiple opportunities for its students. A dynamic I have witnessed and marveled over firsthand. One of the many opportunities Kelly Walsh encourages is the advancement of blue collar trades through state-of-the-art CTE programs located at both Kelly Walsh's own facility as well as pathways. I have experienced these classes firsthand, and I have greatly benefited from these programs. I could not have achieved any of these skills without the availability of these unique facilities and structure. Kelly Walsh also provides various club choices for every kind of student. If a club isn't available, the school makes it an easy process to build a new club. And this makes it painless for students to join a community they feel they can belong to. I have personally loved one of Kelly Walsh's newest club additions, Turning Point USA Club America. It is one of many examples of the educational and insightful clubs Kelly Walsh offers. But most importantly, Kelly Walsh is a school that institutes a welcoming, nourishing, and opportunistic community standard. It is formulaic for a well-performing school to have a caring mindset with regards to the way it academically encourages its community. Having been at Kelly Walsh for my third year now, I can say with confidence that it is this caring mindset that has driven Kelly Walsh for years. It is this caring mindset that has allowed Kelly Walsh to move beyond its expectations. And most of all, it is this caring mindset that has made one phrase special. There is only one Kelly Walsh. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Britt. And students. I was going to tell them when they come back with their state championship band, I want to have them bring some instruments and give us a little demo. Well, I don't know if we're going to be doing volleyball in here, but the band would be fun. All right. Moving on to our second celebration tonight, Ms. Nicole Rapp will come up and present Crest Hill.
All right, Chairman Christopherson, Superintendent Hensley, and Trustees. It's my pleasure tonight to get to tell you a little bit about Crest Hill Elementary. Crest Hill has shown what can be accomplished when a school commits to both student learning and a culture of support. Principal Golin and her team implemented a comprehensive, multi-tiered support system by an active implementation team to ensure every student receives the level of support they need. Their school improvement plan last year was recognized by the Wyoming Department of Education as well thought out, intentional, and paced very well. A reflection of Crest Hill's strategic and student-centered approach. The leadership team guided this work with focus and intention, bringing greater alignment to expectations and practices throughout the school. Because of this collective effort and commitment to improvement, for the second year in a row, Crest Hill has earned a meeting rating on the state accountability model. This achievement reflects the dedication of the staff, the strength of their systems, and most importantly, their belief in every student's potential. It's my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Chrissy Golin, Principal of Crest Hill Elementary, and her team. And remember, it's a great day to be a dragon.
Thank you, Chair Christopherson, Superintendent Hensley, and Trustees, for recognizing Crest Hill this evening. Crest Hill is represented tonight by Emily Axland. They're going to give a little wave. Ronnie Gallegos, Brittany Holbrook, Hillary Jones, Brittany Meyer, and myself, Chrissy Golin. Our school community has been working diligently over the last several years to redefine who we are and what we stand for. After many years of not meeting state expectations, we made significant growth and moved two designations to meeting last year, and we are incredibly proud to have sustained our meeting status again this year. This success is a direct result of the commitment to... Sorry, from our staff, our students, and our families. We have been intentional about strengthening our Tier One instruction to ensure that all students receive rigorous, high-quality learning every day. This year, we are building on that foundation by redefining our Tier Two and Tier Three supports to close gaps and accelerate student learning. Data drives our instructional decisions, but equally important, we have built a community of belonging. Our students and staff know that they are valued and supported. Each morning on the announcements, I say to them, "Crest Hill Dragons, you are known, loved, and cherished. You are unique, essential, and irreplaceable. There is no one like you in this world. In this place and with these people, you are safe and loved." This is not just a daily message, but this is who we are. Students are challenged and supported academically, but they are also deeply seen and cared for. And that culture has been the key to our success. I'm very honored to serve as the principal at Crest Hill and to work alongside such dedicated educators who give their heart and soul to our students every day. Thank you for recognizing the hard work and the growth of our school community.
I would need a motion to set the agenda, please. I'll make that motion.
I second.
Any additions or changes to the agenda that need to be addressed? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, we have come to the place in our meeting where we like to open up a limited public forum and receive comments from the public. Let the people know, back in the waiting rooms, there's probably 10 seats available up front. If you want to come up and sit in this room, it's always nicer to be in the room where the action happens. So... Before we get started, a few things are a little bit different. They went a long time last night, or two weeks ago when I was sick. And I just have a hard time sitting for three and a half hours without break. So if it ends up going as long as it did last time, we're going to plan a five-minute break at the top of every hour. So just give everybody a chance to get up and walk around and do what you have to do. So other than that, the... Somebody stood up and said that you don't have to leave your name and address. The law actually reads that if you're going to speak here, we can require you to leave your name and affiliation. And nobody really seems to know what affiliation means. But the reason we ask you to leave your address is because there's many times when the public comes before us and they have an individual problem that they want to address, and they want to hear back from the board. And the only way we have of getting back to you is knowing who you are. And we can go back through our infinite campus if you leave your address. If you have a problem with leaving or saying your address out loud, but you want us to get back to you, you can leave your contact information with Anya over here, whatever it takes. But it is on you to make sure that we know who you are if you're expecting a return. We're not generating any kind of dark lists or anything like that. We just need to know who you are. So we will be asking you to at least give us your name, and it would be nice to have your affiliation just to make sure that we're talking to Natrona County people. I just really don't care what the Nebraska people have to say that come to me with this. But so also, last meeting, I know there's a lot of passion here. Everybody loves their school, and this is really hard work that we're into and been a part of. And there's a lot of emotions around this table also. But we would like to model good behavior for our children. This is a board for the school district. We're in the business of teaching and modeling for kids. So I would appreciate it if we could treat everybody here with respect. And that means clapping, too. We don't like to see a show of emotion because it can get out of hand. And so please act responsibly. Come up and talk for three minutes is all you get, and three minutes is plenty of time to get your point across. And go ahead and line up, and we'll start the public comment.
Good evening. My name's Ross Shrethman, 2200 Mariposa Casper, if anybody wants to come over. I am... I listened very carefully last week, or two weeks ago, to the passionate parents, teachers, and students of Barnum and Woods Learning Center. I learned a lot. They seem like wonderful programs, and I'm in favor of keeping them open. And maybe the Woods, if the facility there is not adequate, maybe the program can be moved. I noticed in your agenda tonight, the cost savings is somewhere around 1.8 million. However, the budget last year was 394 million. This year, it's 428 million. And I hope that maybe you can find some way to maintain those schools because they seem like they're doing a good job. One other point I want to make, there's been some comments that the legislature, when they passed the tax relief for personal residents, it has an effect on school districts. My understanding that it does not. And it's the average daily membership, the number of students in the seats, that is the driving force in determining the revenue from the state. And I appreciate everything that the trustees have been doing, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Shrethman.
Good evening. My name is Patty Arner, 2050 Sipkey, Barnum. I have had the pleasure of being a teacher in this district for 40 years. Unfortunately, school closures are not new to me. I was teaching at Garfield Elementary and then Willard Elementary when these schools were closed. And now I face another school closure. School closures are devastating. They're devastating for the children who love their schools. They're devastating to the parents who chose these schools for their children to attend. They're devastating for the neighborhoods and communities who support these schools. But the most devastating of all are for the staff members who call these schools home. On October 13th, the school board celebrated Barnum from moving from a non-meeting school to a meeting school in just one year. A proud accomplishment for all of our staff and students. We intend, at the end of this year, to be an excelling school. But what the school board did not see was the hours and hours of hard work and dedication that our staff committed to in order to become a meeting school. Our grade levels worked with each other, and district and school IFs before school, during our lunch periods, after school, and on weekends. A lot of this time was on our own. We rewrote curriculums and found new resources to better fit our higher standards that we were setting for our students. In this process, we came together to become a bonded staff, a true school family. What we have at Barnum will not be matched anyone else. All of our hard work and dedication to both our students and each other is just about to be destroyed by a school closure vote. Our staff will be scattered throughout the district, becoming a part of a new school staff. We are told that we will become leaders and bring our expertise to our new schools, just like we are now. But it will take years for us to feel a part of our new school, if ever. I know this from experience. Many of my former colleagues only lasted one year at the schools they were placed in. They left because they felt they just did not belong. Some of my former colleagues never did find a school family. They never became the leaders they were meant to be. This is the real tragedy, separating our staff, who have all come together to make a true difference in the lives of our students at Barnum, and thus making Barnum a shining star in this district. The Barnum staff deserves to stay together as a unit, serving our students, our parents, our neighborhood, and our community. We deserve to be celebrated for the difference we're making in our students' lives each and every day. Parents across this district will take notice of our achievements and choose Barnum as the place they want their children to attend. And we will grow into the school that we were always meant to be. Please look at what we have accomplished and will continue to accomplish. Please reconsider your vote to close both Barnum Elementary and Woods Learning Center for the sake of all of our stakeholders.
Thank you, Ms. Arner.
Good evening. I'm Trish Nix Casper. I am a retired Natrona County School District music educator, and I currently serve as a substitute for the district. So thank you for the opportunity to meet in front of you tonight. I've had the privilege to work in at least 15 schools within the district during my tenure. And Barnum for one year, and Woods Learning Center for 28 years. I'm heartbroken at the thought of closing schools, but as a small business owner, I also understand the financial obligations you spoke of last meeting and through the minutes that you've placed out. I also listened to the Barnum and Woods Learning Center families and staff that stepped up to share their experiences. I truly felt their anguish. What I don't understand is the closing of an innovative program that has been so impactful for so long within our district. Was the conversation held about a different facility versus a physical building versus a program? I understand that money will be saved through retirement and attrition, but why not save the programming, the philosophy, and the innovation? I have been in numerous teaching positions throughout my career, in and out numerous buildings, and I see amazing educators at work every day. I wholeheartedly believe that you, as a school board, are missing the amazing opportunity you have set before you. Please do not disperse the culture, the philosophy, and the innovation provided by the programming from these schools. As educators, we are consistently asked to think outside the box and meet students where they are. As I'm not privy to a lot of the conversations you've had concerning these closures, I feel that it's concerning to me that you are willing to close programs just to physically close buildings. I can only hope that that was part of your conversations throughout this process. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you, Ms. Nix.
Jared Winsen Reed, Casper, Wyoming. I would give you my address, but my wife's a teacher, and so I choose not to. Everybody here, I'm sure, has seen the jar demonstration that has different sizes of pebbles. You put the big ones in, then the little ones, smaller, smaller, the sand, the water. When this district chose to go from a jar filled with sand and do a school of choice, we broke that bottle and did that. Now, at this point, I feel like the district is taking a step back, taking away some of those pebbles, taking away more and more. I know you guys have tough decisions. I wouldn't want to be in your shoes. But if this school board is going to take away all the pebbles and create just sand in the jar again, why not go back to neighborhood schools? But then if you did that, I guess we couldn't close Barnum. So I mean, your decisions are tough. I understand that. I would like to see a school district that stays with many options for the teachers and for the students. I hope you guys really consider that tonight.
Thank you, Jerry. Anybody else like to address the board tonight? I guess we won't be needing that five-minute break. Okay, we will go ahead and move on. Consent agenda, Superintendent Hensley.
Right, Trustees, this evening, there are five items for your consideration on the consent agenda. Executive session minutes of October 27th, general session minutes of that same date, the certified and classified personnel report, district bills of October 24th and 31st, and then two bids for major maintenance projects. One is from the Midwest Auxiliary Gym Floor Replacement, and then the Verta James Fire Alarm Replacement.
Do I have a motion to accept? I will make the motion to accept.
I will second.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Passes. Okay, reports and recommendations, superintendent recommendations.
So we do have a grant tonight, a $2,000 grant to Midwest School from Farm Credit Services of America for the purchase of an indoor hydroponic garden.
This is in action?
Move approval.
Any discussion on this? I'm always happy to see when people are willing to make donations and grants to our schools. Everything helps. All those in favor of accepting this grant? Staff reports. Ms. Gilbar, are you going to give us a report?
Good evening. Chair Christopherson, Superintendent Hensley, Board of Trustees. In your board packet, you have a memo, and this is talking about our annual accreditation. There is... There are 24 categories that span all the areas of the district, from leadership to academics to operations. leadership to academics to operations. The specific twenty-four categories are listed in your board document. Directors primarily gather the evidence for these twenty-four areas, and they must be submitted to the Wyoming Department of Education by November first of each year. So the the annual evidence was submitted for for to meet our accreditation requirement for this year on October thirty-first, since November first was a Saturday. The requirements for a district to be fully accredited means that you have to have an eighty percent or higher on the artifact approval. I can tell you, last year, we had ninety-seven-point-eight-three percent approval on our artifacts. We had comments such as, this is really thorough, great job, so we continue to improve those processes and submit that evidence to the department. We do have to have approved school improvement plans. I'll go into that a little bit more here in a minute. We have to have no unresolved compliance issues, no unresolved staffing issues, and there is an external review every five years. Our next external review for peer review will be twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So in the interim, it's through links and evidence that we submit that. As part of that accreditation, we do have to submit to a school improvement plans for statute twenty-one-two-two-oh-four. The Wyoming Department of Education actually requires only partially meeting and not meeting schools to submit plans, but here in Natrona, we actually submit for all of our schools and all of our departments. And so those plans really do help support our NCSD Strategic Improvement Plan, as well as meeting the Chapter Six and statutory guidelines that we have to 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 meet. We have received very positive feedback from the Wyoming Department of Education through their System of Support Division about our school improvement process. All of our school improvement plans start with a very intensive data review, root cause analysis, that teams get together and really develop a plan that is specific for their school, and that is a living document that actually helps departments and schools monitor their improvement processes as they go all year. So it's not a plan that's written at the beginning of the year and then sits on a shelf. It's a plan that that schools are monitoring and adjusting as they work through the school year to meet the needs of their students. These plans are available on the NCSD website. There's a dashboard under the About Us, and then you click on NCSD Report Card, and then you'll see that Strategic Improvement Plan Dashboard, where you can see all the school improvement plans for all of our schools and our departments. I'll sit for any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Flett, you have a report for us.
Good evening, Chair Christopherson, trustees, and Superintendent Hensley. This evening, we're bringing the Board of Trustees an update to our fiscal year 2027 budget development process. And if we go to the second slide, the last time we met was Board Budget Committee on October twenty-seventh. We talked about average daily membership and the importance of how that drives funding for the district. So as a broad reminder overview of this, we talked about in FY twenty-six, our current fiscal year, we are being funded for eleven thousand nine hundred and sixty-six students. The projected FY twenty-six actual ADM, we are forecasting eleven thousand one hundred and twenty-three. So with three-year averaging in statute right now for the district, that projects our FY twenty-seven, so next fiscal year's funded ADM at eleven thousand five hundred and sixty-two. So a decrease of four hundred and four students. We talked about this a few weeks ago. That gives us a projected FY twenty-seven general fund budget impact of needing to find five-point-eight million dollars worth of savings, just because of the decline in ADM. That is a slight increase from the spring, when we talked about it during budget, of needing to save four million dollars in twenty-seven. So we're trying to predict a year and a half in advance where ADM will be. And so after we look at the ADM reports as a group, the ten-day, thirty-day, we get more up-to-date data in the current fiscal year, we can extrapolate that forward. So that's how we came up with five-point-eight million. In addition to board budget meetings, we also talked about the excess capacity there and how we still have one thousand four hundred open seats at the elementary level. So there's a overview of ADM. So if we move to the next slide, we talked about a board budget committee that the Tuesday and Wednesday after our last board budget meeting, the Select Committee on School Recalibration was meeting here in Casper, and they did. And they provided numerous directives to the LSO staff to draft a bill to be presented at their next recalibration meeting in Cheyenne on January twenty-second and twenty-third. So what do we learn about these committee directives? If we go to the next slide, there's really, there are a lot of recommended changes. The four biggest ones that we wanted to bring to the board's attention is the increase of student-teacher ratio in the funded formula, which student-teacher ratio is also what we call class sizes, the elimination of three-year rolling average, the update to the regional cost adjustment, and then the revision to teacher salaries within the block grant model. So if we go to the next slide, what does this look like on the elimination of rolling three-year average? That last box to the right, we were projecting eleven thousand five hundred and sixty-two students to be funded for in FY twenty-seven. By removing three-year average and funding on prior year only, that number decreases to eleven thousand one hundred and twenty-three. That is a year-over-year difference of eight hundred and forty-three students and four hundred and thirty-nine students less that we've been planning for a number of months. This is not a function of our ADM projection methodology. This is purely a proposed change in state statute from the recalibration process. If we go to the next slide, so what, once we put these four big components in the funding model and we project it out FY twenty-seven, that takes our revised FY twenty-seven general fund budget projection savings from five-point-eight million to now we need to find and save fifteen million dollars on an ongoing basis as a school district. This is very preliminary information. Again, these are recommendations from the recalibration committee that were provided to LSO staff to be put in a draft bill to be presented at the next recalibration meeting. There's still a long ways to go, but ultimately, this is the best information we have right now, and we wanted to model this for the Board of Trustees. So moving on to this next and last slide, the district has a long history of annually adopting a structurally balanced budget, even during challenging times. Because of the Board of Trustees, Board Budget Committee members, district staff, and other stakeholders have historically made conservative fiscal decisions and have developed a framework to implement a successful budget. The next step begins with our detailed budget work at our Board Budget Committee meetings, where we will review inputs and strategies brought forward by district staff and Board Budget Committee members. And we will continue to adhere to the budget development timeline adopted by the Board of Trustees and the Board Budget Committee, so we put this district in a position to adopt a balanced FY twenty-seven budget in July. So that concludes my comments for the trustees today on this really pressing budget overview and update we wanted to provide. I can stand by for questions.
I have a question for you. If they raise the students per class, doesn't that, doesn't the math work out that we would then have a lot more empty seats in our in our schools? Because those kids are getting squished into...
Chair Christopherson, great question. So if they do then, the funding model will drive out less funding for us, right? Because it's going to be less teacher FTE. It's largely a district decision on what our class sizes are. So it's a, it's a funding model compared to local control on what we're going to do with our with our dollars. So they're related, but ultimately, trustees, you guys have latitude to set class sizes at really whatever you'd like.
Dana.
I'm just wanting to make sure that I understand. So the first thing you just said about the class sizes is, we keep them small, but we'll have less money, correct?
Chair Christopherson, trustee Howie, correct.
Other thing is, are you telling us that we now have to try to find, all this goes through, instead of five million, fifteen million?
Chair Christopherson, trustee Howie, very preliminarily, preliminarily today, that is the number we are going to work off of.
But I won't.
Trustee True.
Thank you. I think it's important for the the public to be aware. What is our, the twenty-six general fund total from last year or from this year? Do you have that sort of offhand relatively?
Chair Christopherson, Chair Truwell's, our general fund budget? Great, two-hundred-and-some million dollars. I want to follow with you on the actual dollar amount. I don't have that off the top of my head.
So a little bit less than ten percent, what we're looking at.
Correct.
Anybody else want to ask him a question? It's pretty grim. Thank you. Okay, we're down to trustee reports. Board committees, Board Academic Steering Committee is the only one we have today, so... Dana.
Academic steering today, we had a terrific report on our special education department. During the report, the staff discussed the importance of a very strong special education program in meeting our strategic plan. Special education team reported on the, it's called FAP, Free and Appropriate Public Education, and the multi-tiered system of support. Special ed students, education needs to be free, appropriate for their development, and it needs to be public. And we use our multi-tiered system of support to give each student the support they need, both behaviorally and academically, to the best so that they can do the best they can to their ability. They also talked a lot about the the different programs offered in our district. We have something called Foundations for Success, which is K-two, kindergarten, second grade, to kind of give kids a boost. It's it's kind of a, it's kind of a preventative so that we can get on on any troubles that they might be having when they very first start. We have a base program, Behavior and Social Education. We also have a day school, NCSD Day School. It's over at the old University Park School, for students that can't quite handle being in a regular classroom all the time. We have programs for what we call functional life skills, teaching students to be able to function in society, to be independent, do what they can for themselves. And we also have one that's called ABLE, Adult-Based Learning Environment. And those students are age, usually age eighteen to twenty-one. That's after they've gone through school. They usually get a certificate instead of a diploma. I attended an adult, a lot of us attended an Adult-Based Learning Environment ABLE graduation last year, and it was, it was pretty awesome. See what all the kids can do, and how proud of them we are and how proud they are of themselves, too. And then we also have one called Intensive Life Skills, which tends to be students who have a lot of challenges and maybe including medical. So there are a lot of different ways that we do our best to help our special education population. There are also times when student needs are not able to be met in these programs, and every now and then, we have to do out-of-district placement. But through all of that, we try really, really hard to do the very best we can for every single special ed student that we have. Is it easy? Oh, heck no. But the the four leaders that we saw today, I think, have a really good handle on taking care of our special ed students. What do you want to add?
Okay, we're down to other boards. Trustee Sedeli, you have some resolutions you want to put forth here.
Indeed, we do, Chair Christopherson. Thank you very much. Trustees, as you all know, next Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, not this week, next week, the nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first, the Wyoming School Board Association will hold its annual state conference at the Ram Cota Hotel. There will be many speakers present, and workshop presenters will also be in attendance. The full program agenda is posted to the WSBA Conference website. Looks pretty exciting. At our last meeting, I gave everyone a copy of the proposed resolutions that will be presented at the delegate assembly, which will be held at one-thirty Wednesday afternoon the nineteenth. I hope you've had a chance to go through them and make your own determination about whether we, as a board, should give them our support. You will recall that originally, there were two resolutions, but I forwarded you a note from Brian Farmer, the WSBA Executive Director, that the second resolution was actually split into two separate resolutions, so that we have three to consider. If, as occasionally happens, that email gets lost in the deep, dark recesses of your inbox, I forwarded it to you again this evening. Now, remember that these resolutions don't become law. They have no force behind them. They are statements of philosophy. If passed by the delegate assembly, if the legislature wishes to pick one of them up and propose one of those resolutions for legislation, well and good. If not, that's their choice. At least it will become part of our advocacy agenda, and they will know how the school boards around the state of Wyoming feel about particular issues. So we have three resolutions to consider. At the last meeting of the WSBA Board of Directors, we discussed the resolutions at length. The directors voted to affirm the first resolution we will read tonight, but chose not to make a recommendation either for or against the second and third resolutions. So our duty tonight is to determine as a board whether we affirm or deny these three resolutions. At delegate assembly, the voting delegates of each board will vote and make their philosophies known. Trustee Schmidt served as our voting delegate last year, and we thank her very much for her service. Trustee Howie has indicated her interest to be our voting delegate this year. If there is no objection, I hereby appoint her to that position. Thank you, trustee Howie, for your willingness to step up to that incredibly important position. So on to our resolutions. Now, if I can find them on my desktop, not in my email, here we go. Okay. Now, Chair Christopherson, would you prefer that I read them in their entirety or trust that the trustees have already done that on their own?
I think you should read them.
Okay, I will. For the benefit of all of the people assembled here, the first one labeled twenty-twenty-seven point one... the first one labeled twenty-twenty-seven point one, Special Education Placement Reimbursement. Be it resolved that the Wyoming School Boards Association urges the Wyoming Department of Education to modify its special education reimbursement schedule to provide timely reimbursement to school districts for special education funding for special education students placed outside of the district, ideally on a monthly basis rather than annually. The rationale is it is the obligation of school districts to provide free, appropriate public education for students identified with particular disabilities. At times, an out-of-district placement may be the only way an IEP team can meet its FAPE obligation, though such placement can incur significant annual costs, in some cases reaching up to four hundred thousand dollars annually or more. What is ours? Do we know?
We've had them as high as a half a million dollars for one kid.
Or one, one student?
Yeah, one kid.
Very good. Thank you.
And I mean, we can absorb that at times, but can you imagine a little school district like Arapahoe, or one of those little guys getting a million-dollar bill and waiting a year?
That'd be very difficult. While districts appreciate state cost reimbursement, receiving it a full year later places an undue burden on school districts, severely impacting their budgets and the ability to provide quality services. More frequent reimbursements will help districts manage these expenses responsibly while ensuring continued support for students with special needs. Whether this action takes legislative action or can be completed under current statutory framework, action needs to be taken to provide relief for districts. And that was submitted by Big Horn County School District Number Three. The recommendation of the WSBA Board of Directors was to affirm this resolution. Before we vote to affirm, deny, or ignore, is there any discussion? Very good. I would move that the Board of Trustees of Natrona County School District Number One vote to recommend this resolution for passage at the WSBA Delegate Assembly.
All those in favor? You probably don't have to read the, the second to all of the secondary stuff. Just read the resolution.
Okay, I can do that. On the second one, the title is Termination Hearing Timeframes. Be it resolved that the Wyoming School Boards Association supports a change to Wyoming Statute twenty-one dash seven dash one one zero D regarding hearings upon the dismissal of a teacher. WSBA supports a specific timeframe for ensuring that a termination hearing is concluded within a reasonable time. And skip the next rationale paragraph, trustees, and go down to W, Wyoming Statute twenty-one dash seven dash one one zero D should be amended to a time limit to conclude a hearing. This may read as follows. In no event shall the hearing commence on a date later than forty-five days after notice, and the hearing officer shall complete the hearing with, within one hundred days after the notice is filed. Note that one hundred days is a recommendation. It could be changed to another reasonable timeframe, so long as a time certain is identified to limit how long the hearing, oh, this is a bad sentence, how long the hearing can drag on for. To limit how long a hearing can continue. How's that? Is that better? That was submitted by Laramie County School District Number One. The recommendation by the Board of, WSBA Board of Directors was no recommendation. Do we have a motion either way?
I would make a motion to recommend this.
Moved and seconded to affirm. Any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to weigh in on this one. It's always been a pet peeve of mine that you can have an employee that gets caught drinking or something that is obviously fireable, and you try to terminate them, and then they go to a hearing, and the hearing six months later, they get paid for sitting home that entire time. So I, I just don't think that's right. So I think that we need to have some type of a timeframe where it's actually going to be addressed in a reasonable amount of time, instead of just letting them drag it on and appeal this and appeal that, and six months later, they're still getting a paycheck.
Is there further discussion on the motion to affirm?
All those in favor? Unanimous.
I did not.
Not unanimous. All those opposed? Hey.
And the third, twenty-twenty-six point three, Pay Considerations for Individuals Charged with Certain Crimes. Be it resolved that the Wyoming School Boards Association supports a change to Wyoming Statute twenty-one dash seven dash one one zero and Wyoming Statute twenty-one dash seven dash one zero two, Parts A, Six, and B regarding hearings upon the dismissal of a teacher and teacher pay prior to a hearing. WSBA supports allowing for school districts to put an employee who has been charged but not convicted of certain crimes on leave without current compensation, but with provisions for back pay and reinstatement if the employee is not convicted. And we'll skip the rationale, assuming that you have. Oh, no, it goes on, on the third paragraph. The statute should be amended to allow for superintendents to suspend teachers without pay under specific circumstances, instead of only after a hearing takes place with language such as, "A superintendent may suspend without regular compensation a licensed employee who has been officially charged but not yet convicted of a felony or a crime involving moral turpitude or immorality." Boy, if you really want to get into legal stuff, look up the definition of moral turpitude. You'll have a lot of fun with that one. If the charge is dismissed or if the employee is found not guilty, the employee must be reinstated with back pay plus interest and normal seniority, submitted by Laramie County School District Number One. No recommendation to affirm or deny was given by the WSBA Board of Directors. There was a great deal of discussion on this one back and forth with a fair amount of arguments, one way or the other. That was true of the last one, and so there was no recommendation to affirm or deny. Is there a motion to affirm or deny this proposed resolution?
I would make a motion to affirm it for the same reasons.
Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded that this board vote to affirm this resolution. Is there any discussion? Trustee Smith. Schmidt, I'm sorry.
The problem I have with this is that we are convicting a person before they've been convicted in a court of law. And I don't think that we have that authority and that we should take that stance. So in this particular case, no, I think we should not vote to support, to affirm it. We should vote to deny it.
Further discussion? Ladies and gentlemen, I concur with trustee Schmidt. I find that no matter how anyone might feel about someone being suspended for, and accused of a particular crime, trustee Schmidt's words, "It is punishing them before conviction," ring true to me and seem to be quite contrary to what the founding fathers of this country intended when they wrote our Constitution. I would further suggest that, yes, it's all very well and good to say when someone is acquitted or if the charges are dropped, oops, we'll pay you back, but what does that do to the person's credit rating? What if the person lost their home because they couldn't make the payments? What if they can't make their health insurance payments? And so I have to say that, yes, I recognize, as Chair Christopherson said, there are people who are more than willing to game the system and drag things out as long as they possibly can. And I don't like that. We're absolutely in agreement on that. But the idea of punishing them before conviction just does not seem right to me.
I would like to answer that.
Please.
I am a private businessman. I had one of my employees a couple of months ago steal one of my trucks, drive it through a house. Right? Took him three months to get convicted.
Did you say through his house?
Through the house, yeah.
Through the house?
Well, into the house. He hit two or three cars on the way in. Drunkard in his skunk. I fired him that day. If we had this, what the school district would do, he would, I would have to pay him until he got convicted. I just do not think that's right. I mean, there's, there's cases, and I think they're trying to be specific here, moral turpitude or whatever, you know, it's like, there's cases. We put a stop to it. It's like, yeah, we're going to fire this guy and, or girl, whatever, but. No, I, I think we need to stop paying people who don't deserve it.
I have this feeling that if I were to respond to that, we'd go back and forth for a long time. So I will exercise my right not to continue. I saw a hand over here. Trustee Hopkins.
I was just going to comment that there's only one school district.
I don't think anybody understands.
Meaning that it would be hard for a teacher to get a job in that time if they were convicted right away, and we convicted them, and they were fired from the one, the one school district in this district or any district. It would be hard for a teacher to go get another job. It's much easier for someone else to get a job when it's just in the public sector, or, you know, that's, that was my point. Sorry.
Thank you.
I guess I had to clarify.
Dana.
This might be one where we want to just not make any recommendation at all and let the whole group fight it out next week.
Well, we, we still have to vote on it. So everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Kissed me. All right. That one fails. Guess I'm not a king.
Chair Christopherson, I make a motion that we neither affirm nor deny on this one.
Any discussion on this one? No longer, my friend. I'll, I'll go with that. All in favor, all in favor, right hand? You're not in favor of this? Oh, you're not. All opposed? All in the middle? Okay.
Very well. That concludes my report on the WSBA Delegate Assembly, Chair Christopherson.
All right. Dana, you have some school visits for us?
We had a really good school visit at Centennial last week. I can sure see myself already that things are much, how do I want to put this, calmer than they were a few years ago. Seemed like all the people that we talked to were working well together and very hard to try and do the best they can for the kids, and it seemed like the kids were responding quite well. Anybody else want to add?
Also, when we were at Centennial, also had a nice visit down in the kitchen. And the manager, who I apologize, I cannot remember her name, just walked us through the care and effort that they do every single day to feed a lot of kids, both breakfast and lunch, and a lot of snacks. And one of the best stories was they have taste testings in the spring about what the kids will, would like to vote on to come in in the fall. So they're really trying to make the food, what the kids want to eat, as well as being nutritious.
We also visited CCA the week before and met with, looked to me like quite a lot of the crew that was there. They had mostly celebrations. They didn't seem to have a lot of concerns. I don't know that, I mean, I'm sure there are some. But they also seemed to be very upbeat and focused on their individual grades. And at the end of that one, I actually got dragged into a sixth-grade classroom. The teacher was one of my students, so I got to say hello to them. That was on Halloween that day. And then some of us judged pumpkins that day, too. But that was a, it was a fairly short meeting, but again, things seemed to be, I asked the principal how things were going, and she said that they had had some issues a couple of years before, but things were also going a lot better there.
Okay. We have a couple of board policy recommendations for first reading.
Thank you, Chair Christopherson. These will go rather quickly. First recommendation. The Board Policy Committee recommends that Board Policy five-three-two-zero regarding physical education class attire be required, be retired as requirements for attire in PE classes are already outlined in student handbooks. This is the first reading tonight, so no action needs be taken this evening. And for the second one, the Board Policy Committee recommends the highlighted changes be made to Board Policy fifty-three-fifty, K-12 academic competitions. These changes align to current practice. Funds for the activities are already included in school budgets. So the part about having to make application to the superintendent and/or designate to, for assistance to compete in approved academic competition is not necessary. This is also a first reading. Action will be taken on both policies during the next board meeting. That concludes my report on the Policy Committee, Chair Christopherson.
Thank you. Well, here comes the tough part, guys. I'm sure we'll have a good discussion on this. The Board Infrastructure and Planning Committee has moved forward the following facility recommendation. Vacate and mothball Barnum Elementary School beginning with the two thousand twenty-six dash two thousand twenty-seven school year. I will make the motion to approve this recommendation. I need a second.
Sadly, I will second.
Discussion. Trustee Schmidt.
Years ago, a previous board made the decision based on a study on school configuration sites to build, to only build add-on or retrofit elementary buildings to accommodate three hundred and twenty to four hundred and forty-four students. As a result of that decision, the two thousand seventeen Board of Trustees closed several schools that did not fit those criteria. After careful consideration and review of the data, I do agree that we, as a district, need to close schools due to a significant drop in enrollment. The money allotted by the state for the operation of an elementary school is based on enrollment numbers, and we have been seeing a continual decline in funding in the past couple of years due to our lower. in the past couple of years due to our lower enrollment numbers. With that being said, I do not feel Bar Nun fits the criteria for closing a school. My reasons are as follows. Previous boards have invested in increasing the square footage of the school to accom- accommodate the school configuration model. Although neighborhood schools are not designated as a specific program school, I consider it in the same category as a program school because most families choose Bar Nun for that reason. And the current administration has only been in place for a few years and is already meeting expectations. Closing the school will dismantle the staff and all of the hard work they have achieved. And I leave this thought, this final thought with you regarding the community of Bar Nun. There are only two exits for the town of Bar Nun. Can you imagine what those exits will look like when every family leaves next year to drop their children off at schools across Casper?
So I guess I'll make a, make a comment. I told you guys that, uh, when, when we first started this, that it was gonna be the hardest decision and the hardest process, because I've gone through it before. I know we've had people speak to us about how great their schools is, and, and the thing about it is no matter what school we chose, we would have people here saying the same thing. We have a culture. We're gonna have to get spread out. So it is a tough, tough decision. And we didn't just make it on the fact that they're 35% full or, or, you know, that they're meeting this year. That was a tough one. I mean, how do you take a meeting school and knock it in the head? I mean, they did a great job out there, but we had eight different main areas we looked at with every school that we had. And Bar Nun, uh, had four of the eight saying that it needs, it needs to be one strongly considered. You know, if, if not Bar Nun, what school? We are losing kids. We have 1,400 extra seats. That's four of our biggest schools would be sitting empty if we did it. And we're going in the wrong direction, and the Wyoming Legislature is setting us in the wrong direction. We have, we saw the budget tonight. We have up to $16 million in recurring funds. This is only gonna take care of 1.7? It's, the next couple of years are gonna be very, very tough. And, uh, yeah. I am going to vote in favor of, of, of closing Bar Nun, but it's with a super heavy heart that I have to do it. Seeing no more. All those in favor of this motion, please raise your right hand. So that would be six to three. The second one, the Board Infrastructure and Planning Committee has moved forward the following facility recommendation. Vacate Woods Learning Center school beginning with the 2026-2027 school year. I'll make the motion to approve this recommendation. Do I have a second? Trustee Schmidt seconds it. I'm gonna start out the discussion on this one also. Because Woods Learning Center was my school. All three of my kids went through there. I spent 16 years at that school. It wonders with my kids. It really did. I loved having that, that small, and what I really loved about it is not having to go to one of the middle schools. Every one of my kids missed that middle school experience. I love the program. It is a hard, hard thing for me to sit here and say that I'm gonna vote to close Woods. But once again, when you look at the numbers, Woods was the top list with all of the negatives on our list. It had by far the average lowest climate score from the parents in this, that took the, took the score of any school in the district. It has gone from partially meeting to not meeting the last two years. And I personally think that it's the, uh, the lack of a principal at that school is, is tough. I would love to move that same type of a program into a better building, but they would have to have a principal, and we would have to adjust some other things to make it work. I think they've been struggling. And along with Bar Nun, I mean, we're closing two schools. I, I personally think we should close three, possibly four. But this year, two schools, and we're affecting the least amount of people. Staff and, staff affected at Woods is 22. And, um, the students impacted is 170. So you're trying to, trying to make the pain as small as we can. And, but at the same time, I know there's a lot of support on this board for these exact type of programs when they're succeeding. But, um, I think it's just, it's at the end of its time. And, uh, it, we don't have the money or the time to, uh, to fix it. Anybody else wanna? Trustee Bolander?
The idea of, excuse me, closing, uh, elementary schools is a very difficult issue to deal with. When I ran for school board, I never imagined that this would be on my plate. But here we are. I know that everyone on this board cares about our students. Not one of us wants to close schools. It is devastating. As I look back at my previous, at previous closures, there are some that stick out to me. Westwood, where my son went to elementary school. Fairdale, where I served my first three years as a teacher in Nautrona County. Garfield, where I served as a one-year, uh, one-year as an interim principal. And now I look at Woods Learning Center, where my daughter attended K through eight, and where I spent the majority of my career, 22 years, learning from, teaching, and loving my students, being on the cutting block. Woods Learning Center has a unique project-based learning environment that promotes integration of subjects, student interaction, and critical thinking, not to mention reading and writing. As I listened to Woods' parents, several of my former students, and some of my former Woods colleagues during public comments, I was very touched and heartbroken. Having said all that, I have to say, we didn't create this problem. I never expected the Wyoming legislators would turn their face away from the Wyoming Constitution and insufficiently, insufficiently fund one of the most important components of our county, of our state, public schools. I cannot understand why many of our elected legislators chose to fund charter schools to help fund homeschools, private schools, religious schools, all at the expense of our beloved public schools and students. Custom property taxes will impact our funding as well. If the legislators could hear the passionate appeals of the public's comments and the letters we received, perhaps they could make better decisions to properly fund public education. I cannot and will not stand for the closing of Woods Learning Center.
Trustee Schmidt.
Uh, base, based off of the criteria I mentioned in my Bar Nun comments, I feel Woods Learning Center does fit the criteria for closing a school. Uh, the building is older and requires extensive repairs and updates. It does not fit the concurrent, the, the current configuration requirements of our district, nor will it ever. Um, the program, it's a valuable program, but in its current capacity, it requires a different administration configuration that does not accommodate IEPs and 504 compliance requirements. And it is also, uh, dependent on heavy parental involvement, and they have not achieved that for several years. And unfortunately, the school has not met expectations since 2018. I would like to see this program revised to fit the needs of the current school environment and be brought to another elementary in the school district, and I hope we as a board can address that, um, that idea in later meetings.
Trustee TruWells.
Yep, this is hard. We need alternative styles of education. Kids learn differently. Teachers like to teach differently. Our standardized tests test one aspect of student learning. Woods is at capacity. They can't grow anymore. We as a district need to be open to different forms of education and small class sizes. There are so many students that need those small environments. Um, but as trustee Bolander said, like, we're, this is, we're kind of being forced into a bigger, um, situation with our legislature. Uh, I like what trustee Schmidt has to say, that I hope that this form of project-based education can find its way to a different school building, um, even a school within a school. Because we need it. Um, and we need those, that flexibility in our teaching styles. So I will, kind of as a protest vote, vote no.
Trustee Petrino.
Um, I'll address some other comments in my trustee comments later. Um, since I've recently had kids at Woods, I wasn't gonna cry, dang it. Um, Woods is such a gift to this district, and I'm so bummed that other kids and parents don't have the opportunity to really experience it. Because until your kid, like, really gets to experience circle groups and the impact of that, we'll never know what that's like. Um, to see, like, an eighth grader walk a kindergartner that's struggling, like, and just to have them, like, hop in and sit with them and, and work with them without any teacher prompting whatsoever. I mean, it is truly incredible. Um, and that school is a gift to this district and the community, and we are losing so much by losing that school. And on the parental involvement piece, like, that school has tremendous parental involvement. Um, and I saw my kid grow from very shy into a very social, very thriving little boy. And so I am voting no because I love that school, and it is a gift, and I understand it doesn't fit the model that the state wants, blah, 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 but, we are losing a lot by losing Woods.
Trustee Howie.
All I want to say is that I hope the audience can understand after listening to some of these comments that we've been talking to each other for weeks, trying to figure out different ways to do this without doing it at all. And there's not a one of us up here that aren't heartbroken with this situation.
Seeing no more comments. All those in favor of this, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes. Man, guys, it just kinda sucks. I just feel really bad. I mean, and we're gonna start with trustee comments. Um, I'll start down here with trustee Howie.
First, I'd like to congratulate Kelly Walsh for four years running to meeting expectations. You guys know I'm partial to that. That's, was my school for a long time, and they're doing wonderful things, and Crest Hill has done some huge growth in the last couple of years. All that is a tribute to our teachers, our staff, our administrators, and how hard all the students are working as well. I would like to say that Nautrona County School District did not create the problem of decreasing enrollment. My personal opinion is that it was partially a product of the pandemic, but also a result of the highly charged political atmosphere in Wyoming the last few years. And what is scary, well, maybe inevitable now, is that if the legislature doesn't get its act together and start supporting public education, we're gonna be faced with this again next year. Because here's the thing. Our state legislature isn't supporting public education as the Wyoming Constitution requires it to, nor is our superintendent of public instruction. Charter schools such as WCA can choose their students. It also has a religious component, which is not allowed if they're accepting public money. And they'll tell you they're not, but it's not true. They are. Homeschooling and private schooling want public money for private education, and all of that is unconstitutional. Public schools must accept any student who comes through our doors, and you know what? I wouldn't have it any other way. All students need to be functional citizens, and I really wish more young people would stay in Wyoming. I taught high school in this district for almost 30 years, and I know it's a lot harder now. Many students have a lot more issues than years ago, and it's not their fault. A high school teacher I know posted yesterday on Facebook about how important it is to really see these kids and to support them besides teaching them subject matter. Because you don't know what was going on with them before they got to the class. And we accept all of them, and we want all of them. We must educate them all. It's the law. It's the right thing to do. But our resources are not infinite. And neither are the resources of the state of Wyoming. And it's really sad that the people in charge of the state are working against us and our kids, not for us. They're not even working with us. And I think we need to see a big change in how things are run in this state.
Trustee Petrino.
Ha, big congratulations to Kelly Walsh volleyball this weekend, too. Back-to-back champs. Very excited for them. Um, and thank you all for being here, and, uh, particular big thanks to everyone who came and testified, uh, two weeks ago as well. I know it takes a lot of courage to sit up here and, and talk and, um, especially for emotional testimony, so I appreciate everyone's willingness to do that and to come up here and hold us accountable, as you should. Um, none of us want to do this. We have to, and it sucks. It's been very heated conversations and emotionally charged conversations. Um, but as, uh, trustee Howie said, we have a legislature that is not upholding its, um, constitutional obligations to public education. We were planning for $4 million in cuts this year and the next two years, and we were doing that thoughtfully, um, going into this year. Um, and we didn't plan that two and a half months into the school year that, um, we would have to add another $2 million to that, and then a couple of weeks later, oh, now we're up to $15 million. We weren't planning for that. All of that happened within the last two weeks, last two months. Um, so I, I hear everyone's frustrations and concerns. We're right there with you. I'm sure our cabinet is right there with you, too, as we're all scrambling, trying, trying to figure out what the heck it is we are going to do. We hear your frustration. We want you to continue to reach out and help hold us accountable and, and bring ideas to us, but we also need you to turn your attention to Cheyenne. I testified at recalibration two weeks ago, and what I can tell you is that they don't care. They were on their phones. They were having side conversations with everyone that testified. They don't care. They are dangling a carrot of raising teacher-based salaries while subsequently trying to raise classroom sizes, taking away funding for technology, taking away funding for mental health, taking away funding for SROs, taking away funding for nutrition, and taking away funding for other educational necessities. So your ire, while understandably directed at us right now, also needs to be directed towards your shine. And especially the Education Recalibration Committee, because they don't care. And so if you are a teacher, if you are a parent, if you are a stakeholder in this district at all, please help us hold them accountable, too, because they're not doing their job. So I hear your frustration. I'm right there with you. We're trying. I'm trying. But this is also, like, we have state issue here, and it's only gonna get worse. We have to save maybe $15 million this year and the next subsequent years, too. This sucks.
Trustee Hopkins.
Thank you. Uh, there's been a lot of talk about, um, why we're in this position. Things like the state isn't funding us, or that radiant nuclear pulling out cost us fa- cast us families. But those excuses don't explain anything. The state still funds every district at the same The state still funds every district at the same level through the block grant model. If local property taxes drop, the state fills the gap. That's the law, so this isn't about the lack of state funding. And Radiant Project, it was a nuclear manufacturing facility, not a neighborhood development. It might have been brought a couple of hundred jobs over a decade, but that doesn't automatically mean more families or more kids in our schools. That argument is simply not reality-based. I also want to note that Natrona County's overall population has not declined, and is projected to be about 80,000 in 2025. This modest growth undermines the claim that the school closures are justified by dramatic drops in county populations. The real issue isn't fewer people, it's how we are serving them. So why are we really closing schools? Are we not spending the money we already have in ways that serve students and families efficiently? We have allowed programs to multiply the same specialized initiatives, duplicate administrative costs, and overlapping services. Spread thin across too many sites, some of these programs serve small groups of students while draining resources from classrooms that serve the majority. Meanwhile, families are telling us what they need: communication, safety, and strong academics. But we drifted into a system that prioritizes structures and programs over people. When parents feel unheard, when basic classroom supports are strained, they start looking elsewhere, and that's exactly what's happening. This vote, my votes, are just not about funding formulas or lost industrial, industrial projects. It's about priorities. It's about whether we've kept our focus where it belongs. Closing neighborhood schools won't solve those deeper issues, it will only make them worse.
Thank you, Mr. Bolander.
Well, I've pretty much made my statements already, but I do wanna compliment Kelly Walsh for their pillars of excellence. That was a very nice thing to hear about. And, you know, the, you know, the, the structure that they're putting together, where their, the success of their academics, their athletes, they have gotten to the point where everybody is accepted and they meet or exceed expectations. Crest Hill, congratulations to them for rate, rating improvement over the, over the years. And, yeah, on that, I just wanna say, I had a couple of really nice school visits since the last meeting. We went to Pine View and Centennial, had the pleasure of joining other board members, cabinet members, superintendent Hensley, associate superintendent Rose, to visit two remarkable schools, Pine View and Centennial. We had great, inspiring conversations with talented, committed teachers and principals, and it was so good to hear that. And I also want to compliment trustee Howie and trustee Petrino for their statements and trying to make, trying to get it out there of what we're really trying to deal with and how far we have to go. And I would ask that each and every one of you here would make an effort to contact our legislators and convince them that they have to follow the constitution and fund our schools. Thank you.
Trustee Stedely?
I hope Kelly Walsh High School and Crest Hill don't get overwhelmed by all of the great things we've had to say about them tonight. They deserved each and every one of them, and of course, we're going to hear from them again, and we will celebrate them again, and every school in the district, because we have some amazing educators and amazing young people in all the classrooms. This evening, we, as a duly-elected Board of Trustees, chose to disagree with one another publicly regarding some very difficult issues. We did not enjoy it, did we? But it's our job. It's why we were elected, that's why we ran, even though, as some of us discussed earlier, when we were running for election, we didn't think we'd have to sit here and close a school, did we? But it's what we were faced with. It's our job to tackle those issues the way our conscience dictates. And we did it the way it is supposed to be done. We may have disagreed with one another, certainly did, but we did it agreeably. We disagreed, but we weren't disagreeable. And that's the way it's supposed to be. I told you at the end of my trustee comments two weeks ago that, no matter what else happened, each and every one of us would do what we believed was the right thing to do, whether we wanted it or not. And I believe that's what each of us did. We didn't have unanimous consent, but we each did what we thought was right, even if we were faced with decisions that we didn't want to make. Thank you, one and all. I honor you, and I am very, very proud to sit here with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Over to trustee Schmidt.
As you can, as you can see, this board is divided, and it has been for at least the last three years in its, in its ideology and in its thought process with public education. I don't believe that this is necessarily a legislative funding problem. I think this is a societal problem. We're not having children, and there are public school employees that do not have children, and yet they want to be employed to teach children. There are families in this community that, and there are kids that are growing up in our society that have been told, we're overpopulated, we're killing the earth, and more and more, they have decided we're not going to contribute by not having children. That's happening here, it's happening in the state, and it is happening in the nation. It has been happening in Europe for years, and we are facing a crisis. It's not just public education, it's our society. A lot of our government programs are funded by the fact that we have people working in our society and contributing to the incomes and to the tax base of the government. Well, we don't have as many doing that anymore, and so things need to change. Our legislature is required every five years to recalibrate its funding system, and it has to look at a lot of factors. And a lot of families in this state have not been happy with public education. They have requested, time and time again, to change the system, to do different things, and they have not gotten those answers. And so they've gone to their legislature and asked them to provide a different alternative funding for families who choose to leave public education. They still believe in the constitution's requirement to provide education, but they want alternatives to that, to the system that we have. And we, as a district, have an obligation to look at that as well. What are we not doing right that has caused families to leave, 400 students to leave? That's not all kindergarten birth rate-related. There are kids leaving at every grade level in this district. Where are they going? Why are they going? What are we not doing in providing for them? That is really what we, as a board, can tackle. We can look at what we're providing, look at the different alternatives. Woods was one, but the families at Woods weren't supporting it like they used to, the way that model demands. So what do we have to do to adjust that model? To help keep it going, but in a different format, that doesn't necessarily require as many parents who both work, who can't contribute to it like they once did when the program started? Why are 350 kids going to the charter school? Is it just because they want to get out of the public school system? Is it because they want a classical education? What model are they doing that we don't have here, and can we do that here to bring those kids back? Those are all things that we, as a board, can do, and it can be funded, and it will be funded by the state. But we have to make those decisions, and it is in our hands to look at the programs that we provide and figure out how to do it. I have a great concern for our idea of giving every elementary school the option to teach in, in any form that they want. The problem with that is that all those kids have to converge on four middle schools. Are all of those elementary schools teaching at the same pace, at the same information to get those kids to where they need to be when they converge in four middle schools, and then again into two high schools? They're not, because our meeting standards aren't there in the middle schools. You look at it, it's dropping, and then it drops in some of our high schools. So what are we doing wrong? That's what we should be working on and, and be concerned with, because that's what parents see, and that's why parents choose to leave. Homeschool families do not want government money. If they did, they wouldn't have, they wouldn't be homeschooling, and I can guarantee that. If the ESA bill goes through, homeschool families won't be lined up to take them. That's for sure. Private schools, yeah, they do, they want the money. And I'm ashamed at any private school that would increase its tuition base just to accommodate the allotted money for the ESA account. But the one thing we have to worry about with the ESA account is, yes, on its face, in our constitution right now, it does violate it, so to speak. But the clause that they reference in that lawsuit, it has been deemed unconstitutional by the state, the United States Supreme Court. They did it in Montana, and our clause is the same. So we could face that challenge at a circuit court level, if this case, if the Supreme Court chooses to ignore that, I mean, if our Wyoming Supreme Court chooses to ignore that. So we have a lot of issues, I agree, but I think we, as a district, can do a lot more here at our level, instead of calling names and screaming and yelling at the legislature who are, once again, statutorily required to recalibrate its funding and to answer to every state community member, not just Natrona County. Our county problems are not the same in Big Horn County, Laramie County, all, all across the state. They're very vastly different. I went to one of the recalibration meetings, and I sat there. We were, myself and trustee Hopkins, were the only two there from a big district. And all of those other smaller district trustees and superintendents, they had a way different story to complain about. They weren't complaining about loss of students, they were complaining about retaining teachers, getting enough teachers. We might be overstaffed. There's differences in this state, and it's a huge, huge state with a lot of different district problems and district sizes. And so to ask a state legislator to answer every single problem and to make an absolute perfect funding model, I would like to know what funding model you would like. Outside of the block grant model, what model do you want that you think or satisfies every public school funding problem? I ask you to call your state legislature and give your funding model. Critique the one we have, give them suggestions on how to fund things. Don't just say, because we all want to be political and say, you're a terrible Wyoming Freedom Caucus person, or you're a terrible rhino, or whatever. Give them suggestions. Please, that is how we make things better. Give us suggestions of what kind of school programs you want, how best to make the transition from elementary to middle to high school, so that our kids can succeed and those schools can succeed at every single level. That's what we need to do. We need community involvement. We're gonna need community involvement when we start cutting the budget, because we gotta start cutting it. And so we're gonna need your help, we're gonna need the community beyond this room to step up and help us, and help us meet the needs of the kids in this school. And so that's what I hope we all focus on.
Trustee TruWells?
Chairman, first, I'd like to really thank Kelly Walsh and Crest Hill for being here. You were the bright spot of tonight, so thank you, and thank you for staying. As I was trying to kind of think about how I wanted to deal with my trustee comments, I took a few different stabs at it. First, I thought, well, I'll be the cheerleader, right? And to say, hey, we will get through this. That is true, we will get through it, but that is definitely not reading the room. So I deleted that, and then I thought, well, okay, we'll do the accountant side. We have, our new estimate is $15 million yearly to cut. That seemed way too clinical for a human improvement occupation such as teaching. We teach kids, they're all different, they're all unique in their own little ways. So then I thought, well, okay, I'll be the defender of small classrooms and innovative curriculum, and that just broke my heart. So my trustee comments are simple. We are sad and heartbroken with you. But I do have a request. For those elementary schools that will remain open, I ask that you welcome those displaced. You give them more patience and grace to their orientation. You allow them to work through their sadness and awkwardness of being new, that's both students and teachers, and you have a huge welcome mat. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Alvey.
Barnum had a spirit day today. It was really fun for my kids to get to wear their Barnum stuff. If it helps anybody, I'm going home tonight to two children who are gonna meet me at the door and ask if I was able to save their school, and I'm gonna say, I wasn't. I was never gonna vote against the school that I know has loved my family dearly and that I love immensely. We're gonna finish this here out strong.
Thank you. I guess this is what we ran for, what we got elected for. I said earlier, I'm a Woods parent, 16 years, and if I wasn't sitting in this seat, I'd be sitting out in that seat saying, please don't close this school. I would, but I am sitting in this seat and have to consider the entire district and every kid in this district. And I don't know where the children are going. This particular closing wasn't the fault of the legislature. If they take away the three-year rolling average and we have to come up with $15 million, that squirt are gonna be on them. Hopefully, they don't do that. Hopefully, there's enough feedback that they realize what, what it's going to do. You know, I'm, with the Woods family specifically, I'm sorry. I'm not, I'm probably the most hated Woods parent there is alive right now, and, but that's what it has to be. I, hopefully that you guys will stay involved. I love that program, it'd be great if we could start it up someplace else a little bit differently, especially with the principal. Thank you, I'm gonna turn this over to superintendent Hensley.
So trustees, a lot of very, very hard work to staff and parents out there. We are all, I mean, you've heard a lot from our trustees, but as staff, we are deeply saddened, very, very heartbroken with you. Know that we will work very, very hard in this transition time. And so with that, your next meeting is November 24th, 2025, at 6 o'clock here in Central Services.
We are sure-